How many packets are right here?
Shaila. Who's in the hallway with Javier? Who's in the hallway with Javier?
Three D. This was three D.
Good morning Meadow.
Good morning.
Did Brandon come hook us up?
Oh, yeah.
We are hooked up.
Yeah.
I see us.
He remoted.
Just joined.
I'm not used to seeing us up here. We haven't done that in so long.
Still won't hook up?
All right. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Y'all please rise for the invocation and pledge. Commissioner Parker, will you lead us in the invocation?
May I have a little father, we come to you today and just thank you and praise you. We ask that you watch over this meeting, guide our tongues and our hearts to do what your will. Lord, we know that everyone in this room has someone that's heavy on our hearts and we ask that you just touch them in all the way that you can. We thank you for another day and we thank you above all else for your son Jesus and it's in his name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Salute the flag of the state of New Mexico and the zealous symbol of perfect friendships among united cultures.
First on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
We approve.
Got a motion of second to approve the agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, approve the minutes from Tuesday, October twenty first.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And minutes from the special meeting on November twelfth.
Make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Got a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Third, approval of payroll and payables through, from October first through the thirty first.
I have a question on that, Madam Chair.
Yes.
Mary, are we fully staffed in all of our departments?
Um, currently. No, we are short a deputy. Our half and half position is open. Those are the two, well, and the finance.
So it looks like we're averaging about forty-five hundred per paid period in overtime?
Depending, it's been a little bit. It's been a little bit more this last, in October, but it's not usually quite that high.
The election also affected that.
What's that?
The election also affected that. My office never has overtime except on election week.
I see, okay, all right. Make a motion to approve.
Okay, I had one more question real quick. Um, so there was a couple of people that have had a problem with their payroll, insurances and different things. What do we need to do about that?
We're working through that. Anyone that's having problems has been emailing me or coming through Paycom.
Okay.
And we're speaking with each person individually.
Okay. Trying to get transitioned over? Okay. Thank you. Okay, we have a, a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion of second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item four, public requests. Do we have anybody that has a public request? Well, she got anything? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to elected officials and department heads, assessor's office, Mr. Floyd.
I don't have anything.
Okay.
Do y'all have any questions for me?
Okay, thank you. Okay, clerk's office, Ms. Park.
Uh, good morning. I, um, did say at the, uh, November twelfth meeting that we do not have a recount required because of a close race. However, the Texaco School Board was very close and, uh, so Curry County has to recount that. That affects us because there are twelve voters in that area down in, well, there's forty-five eligible voters, twelve cast ballots in that race. So we will have to recount that. Um, it'll take place at the same time as our scheduled recheck, um, on December second, following the commission meeting on that day. And I think that's it.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Park? Thank you. Probate, Mr. Terry. He's not here. Sheriff Sanchez, you're up.
I'm up. Good morning, Madam Chair, good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
Um, so the guys had a total of eighty-one reports taken in the month of September and October, or, yeah, in October. They had sixteen arrests ranging anywhere from, uh, domestic violence, negligent use of a daily weapon, false imprisonment, um, some child abuse charges, couple of narcotics violations, criminal trespass, reckless driving, uh, just things of that nature. We did finish our traffic grant fiscal year, so we're working on negotiations for the upcoming. We'll have to get the new county manager signed up for, uh, the electronic version of that so she can sign, uh, the forms and we will be bringing that before the commission whenever we get that approved. And I'll stand for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Treasurer's office, Ms. Ramos.
I don't have anything to say.
Okay, thank you. Board of Finance, Ms. Ramos, do you have anything there either?
No.
Okay. Detention and Matt Ramsey and Thornton.
Um, so Thornton's not here today, she's doing some GED classes this morning. From my report, I did include hers. Um, we have sixty-three this morning in-house. We took about nine to prison last week. We have eight females, fifty-five males. We have sixteen out of county. I'm holding for Quay County, Cannon, Chavez and Guadalupe County. Um, for billing for Quay County last month was forty-five thousand five hundred dollars. Cannon was five hun- five thousand four hundred and twenty-five dollars. Chavez County is ten thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars. And we have yet to bill for Guadalupe because we just started that. Um, we have sixty-two people in for last month or the month of October. We have twenty-six by PPD and twenty by ESO. And this is to include the transports that are coming in from prison or other facilities that ESO is required to do. We are fully staffed at the detention center and we've also hired for our peer support position, which we've changed to care coordinator. For the MAT program, we have ten individuals in. Ten in individual group, uh, counseling and ten in group, ten in individual and group counseling. Ten in yoga, two in GED at the moment, and then two on medications for that program. And I stand for any questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
DWI compliance, Reed and Minnis.
Good morning, Sheriff. Um, I, my main thing is on part seven.
My main, uh, issue I'd like to speak on will be in part seven, so I defer to that part of the agenda.
Thank you. Finance, Ms. Weems. HR, Mr. Roscoe.
I was talking about what we were going to talk about.
And maintenance, Mr. Spinks, is he here? Okay, and road, Mr. Dominguez is out. He has got the flu, so he texted this morning. Does anybody have anything they would like to share with the county manager on the roads at this time since Mr. Dominguez isn't here? Okay. And special project, Ms. Weems? Okay. Safety committee, Tasha? Not here. We are two, manager, Ms. Forgé.
Okay, so, um, first off, uh, I have been following up on some, uh, finance officer leads.
Can you get your microphone?
Oh, yes. Um, I've been following up on some finance officer leads, um, that I got at the infrastructure, um, finance conference. Um, and then, uh, I attended the county manager's meeting in Santa Fe. Um, I have attended a couple NMCIA meetings, the soil and water conservation meeting, the RCCDC meeting and the chamber luncheon. Um, at the county manager's meeting, I learned about, um, a Narcan dispensing machine that, um, would be free for us. All that we would have to do is provide the space and the electricity for it. And so, um, it would be free for people to access. So if that is something that you guys are interested in me pursuing, I could get some more information. And then we could figure out, um, a place for it. It's about the size of, um, like a, a pop machine. And, um, they have to put a name in, but they could put Donald Duck. Um, and then it explains to them how to use it. Um, and then they would refill it. Um, we wouldn't have to do anything other than provide the space and the electricity. So would you guys like me to get some more information on that?
Where would you put something like that?
We would have to discuss that, um, where, where we could put it where it would be accessible to the public.
I'd like to hear more about it.
Okay. I will get you guys some more information for the next meeting and, and put it in your packets. Um, we also, in the packets, I included the proof of the calendar. Um, I don't know if you guys have had a chance to review that, but, um, if there is any changes that you would like made, um, or if you have any questions on that, um, I'm going to put it on the agenda for the December second meeting to approve. So, um, I didn't know if you guys had anything that, um, had questions on that.
Were there any changes made to it?
Um.
I looked at it, but it's sideways on my laptop, so.
Yeah, since, not really, um, the only thing I would say is that, um, the, let's see. We tried to make sure as far as like any big meetings or anything that we would have, that those were addressed. Um, the, we checked, double-checked all the paydays. Um, the only thing was for Easter, um, I believe that we were looking at if we wanted to do the, the Friday or the Monday. Um, so April third or April sixth, I think was the main question as far as what, what you would prefer.
And the Employee Appreciation Day is a holiday between President's Day and Easter. And we just go halfway and we set that in March sixteenth, I think.
Yeah, March sixteenth.
And then this year we did not celebrate Veterans Day on Veterans Day, which I felt like was an issue. That I would like to see Veterans Day on Veterans Day instead of Monday.
Yeah.
I agree with that too.
And we fix it on this, yeah.
Yes.
My personal opinion on the, um, Easter recognition, I would like to keep it as Good Friday instead of Easter Monday. Personally.
Does any other employees or anybody have an opinion on that? On anything on the calendar?
I do on the Easter as well. I agree with, uh, with Ms. Sanchez about the Easter holiday. And the reason was is because a lot of the employees' families, they have off on Good Friday, but not on that Easter Monday. So it kind of conflicted with some of the scheduling. So I think that Good Friday would benefit the employees rather than the Easter Monday.
Okay.
They should be on the appropriate days anyway.
I agree. I agree.
We had tried to follow what the public schools were doing in the past and last year they had both and.
So we're going to do Good Friday instead?
Yeah, and I will make that change. And put that with the next, um, meeting. Um, I also just wanted to highlight the chamber doing the cleanup downtown, um, around the square. It looks fantastic and there was a ton of people out there. Um, they just did a really, really good job. I couldn't believe how many people were, were down here. So, um, I just wanted to note that, um, there are a couple parades coming up that I think that we should do something in. Um, the Portalis Parade is December thirteenth. Um, I think that it would be good if we had a presence in that. And then also Cannon Air Force Base has a parade on December fifth. And I think that we should have a presence there as well. Even if it's, you know, we just do a truck with the flatbed and some lights and the county seal and, um, I would like to do that. If you guys, any of you could participate, I think that would be good. And then if there's any employees that would like to do it as well, I just think that it would, that it's good for us to, to be participating in those.
Is it the twelfth? Okay. It's December twelfth?
Friday, December twelfth, yes.
Okay.
Um, let's see, I, um, spoke to representatives of Comcast and T-Mobile, um, about some prior projects. So we are, um, I'm just following up on that and getting up to speed. Um, I just received the twenty-twenty-sixth multi-line and law enforcement renewal documents. So I'm going to review those and then present them to you, um, at the December second meeting. Um, along with the insurance, we need to update vehicle values, um, on the insurance. I was made aware at the, uh, managers' meeting that our values are not accurate. Um, so we're working on fixing that. Um, I also met with Kevin and Judge Mauer about, um, the AOC funding for the courthouse renovations. Um, and the MOU for the district court, um, security. And I've spoken to the sheriff and Kevin about that and they're going to present to you at the December second meeting, um, about the, that, um, security position. The last thing I wanted to bring up was, um, Quaylene and I have been looking at doing, um, Saturdays on the square, um, between now and Christmas to promote some local, um, you know, promote the local businesses around the square and just to get people to shop locally and spend their money here. Um, we're looking at trying to see if maybe we can do a concert one Saturday, maybe, um, one of the kids' entrepreneur fairs. Um, just some different ideas. So she and I are going to, uh, meet again about that this afternoon. And then I'm doing a Facebook Live with her tomorrow, so we will, um, bring it up then, um, as well. So we just wanted to try to really draw people to downtown and we're just thinking Saturday afternoon for a few hours just to get people here and, um, hopefully then they'll stop into the, the businesses too. I'll stand for any questions.
Anybody?
I do.
Okay.
Where do we stand with DFA right now?
We.
And someone in-house? Or is that still, uh, something that we think might be necessary or not?
Um, do you want to speak on that?
The last update that I received is we are still in line. However, we are very far down on that line. Uh, so there is quite a few requests from different counties that are needing assistance from them. And that's the update that I have. So they, we're still there, they're still planning to help us, but they don't have someone that they can send in their immediate future.
So have we gotten any feedback on our budget, if you will?
And we do not, um, the, and our new analyst is working with me. We, um, just got me set up to have access. And I have not heard from him in a couple of days, um, on, uh, where we are on the budget. We just, last night, um, got July balanced. Yay! So we're going to move forward. Hopefully it doesn't take us three months to balance August and September. And then we'll be ready to, um, finish up that first quarter report. And I'm sure before that we'll have information on our budget. I'll probably send him an email today and just say hello, where are we? And see where we're at on getting all of those figures finalized. And there is some work that needs to be done in-house and in code, um, that, of transitioning, um, some carryover. I need to make sure that I understand how that's done and if that got done properly.
How soon will we see the effects of our capital outlays and how long will the effects last of our capital outlays?
I am not sure. I'll have to dig into that for you and get back to you.
I'm just kind of curious what that's going to do for our future fundings. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. Do you have anything else, Ms.?
No, I do not.
Commissioners.
All I have is, I'd like to see, not till probably after the first of the year, but soon after, we'd like, uh, have a road workshop, which we haven't had in a while. Maybe a year, I don't know. But we need to schedule that. Sometime probably January. That give one and everyone else sort of look at their priorities. All I've got is, uh, me and county manager, Ms. Forgé, we was at the, uh.
Enterprise.
Enterprise Center. And anyway, after the meeting that we had over there, I was shown the back of the building at their break room, right before you go to the break room. It is horrendous. It is a big lot built, you wanted, and I can't believe it's even there, to tell you the truth. Anyway, that concrete underneath the carpet tiles, you know, it's got those square carpet tiles, that stuck to the floor, adhesive back, whatever. Anyway, there's been some work done or something. And anyway, that concrete, it's just like walking on a cliche road. That pit run cliche, I'm talking rocks. It was just unlevel, holes. It's unreal. And they have to walk across this every day. And the lipstick that was covering this up was a rug thrown over this. I don't know how long it's been there. I can't believe, you know, I guess, uh, there were some emails that had been sent. Ms. Forgé is going to check into them, how long ago they were.
And I haven't received them yet.
And so, uh, but it is a big lot builty right there. I mean, there's a hole, I guarantee it's three, three inches deep.
What's it going to take to fix?
Huh?
What's it going to take to fix?
Oh, it's about to take, somebody's about to go back in there and take that out or get some, uh, busted out and go to cement it or get that cell floating cemented. I think they make a lot of cement out. They go back in there and float it. Let it cure and then re-carpet it. But they've been walking across this, going to their own break room, I don't know how long. It's over by that back door. And, uh, that goes out to the alley. And I couldn't believe it. And I showed it. And then that wasn't all of it. Then we go downstairs. I could smell, you could smell a musty smell. So we go downstairs and open up a closet. And sheet rock, halfway up the sheet rock, this black mold in there. Just soon you open up that door, well, I don't know how long that's been there. It's still growing. It ain't going to get killed out till do something about it. And then, and it has been, but the wall back there, the back of that closet been busted out where they've read out some pipe, you know, some plumbing back up in there. And I was not, and all I had is my phone, uh, flashlight, looking back up in there and I'm not for sure if they're still, if there's still maybe a leak back there.
Who fixed the leak?
Uh, I don't know who tore the floor. How long it's been there?
When I spoke to Gary about it, he said, um, that it was my understanding that they're the ones who had fixed it. It was the fire suppression system that was, that had a leak. Um, he said that by that back door, I guess, the, the concrete is level with the door, there's really no lip. So anytime it rains, water comes in there. So the, he said, I believe this is the third, or they've already replaced that floor three times. Um, there was a drain, or there is a drain outside the door, but it was, um, full of dirt. And, um, uh, so when I spoke to him, he said that they were going to get over there and, um, get things taken care of. So I'm just going to stay on it and make sure that that gets.
Why weren't they taking care of before if they knew it was there?
I do not know.
I don't know. I don't know. Anyway, to me it's a big lot builty. It's, you know.
And that's why I'm waiting for the emails as well to kind of see what, who was talking to who and when that happened and, um.
You know, you got Quaylene, you got, uh, Jody, they've got some heels on, walking across there. It's a wonder, they haven't twisted an ankle or fell, or water, you know, or whoever. It's a wonder, but, but the, I guess what concerns me the most is downstairs in that closet.
Yeah.
With this black mold. And I don't know, something's got to be done. And I think it, you know, and I, we're hoping, I don't know if it, there was a, Ms. Forgé is going to look and see if there was a insurance claim on this, you know, something. And, uh, but something's got to be, you know, and after the meeting, I'd like for all of us to go over there and go show you. After this meeting, we'll walk across the street and look at it. Because I, I, I know my eyes was, I couldn't believe, I just couldn't believe what I was seeing. And especially how long they said it had been. So anyway, I think there's a big concern over there. It'd be nicer if they brought it to our attention.
And that's why I want to see the email chain, to see who was contacted and what was said. And, and my understanding, um, I found out some more information yesterday that there has been, um, ongoing problems. There were multiple different things that happened that got resolved, but that there's been several things with mold, um, in that basement. And I don't know if it's that exact same room, but in that, in that general area. But it sounds like it's been different things that have been resolved and then something else happens and then it happens again.
Well, we need to get that checked so that if there is an issue for health or safety with that, that we tend to that immediately.
Yeah. I agree. Yes.
But, uh, it's a, you know, I just, I was appalled. But I, but I think we all need to walk over there. Let y'all, everybody needs to get eyes on it and see what we're looking at. And, and as far as, uh, we looked in other closets nearby and other rooms. And I didn't see no, there was another closet that had a little water damage on the paint. But it was dry and there was no mold or nothing, you know, it had been there for a while. It was a long, an older issue, but, uh, just cosmetic type deal. But, uh, otherwise, just me looking around, it was only contained just to that one room.
Yeah. Well, and that's why I bought, I brought Commissioner, um, Chriswell over there, or we were there for a meeting, but I wanted him to see, to see, because I'd been made aware of it the night before that. So I definitely think that it needs to be, um, addressed.
Very, and very, to me, it is a big lot builty for the county. Health and health reasons plus a lot builty of having to walk across that floor. You know, going to the break room and stuff. Just tell you the truth, it's totally uncalled for. But anyway, I wanted that to be brought to y'all's attention. Merry Christmas.
You got anything else, Commissioner Chriswell?
I have nothing positive at this time. To share with anybody.
Commissioner Parker, do you have anything?
Yeah. So in the, in the payouts, and she, so just stick with the, I'm loud. In the payouts for the, uh, uh, in our packets anyways, it shows, and I know we brought this up before, but we're paying seven, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars a month for landscaping. Is that just here at the courthouse or is that supposed to be all of the county properties? And I'm asking that because I don't think any of the county properties get attended to except by the detention staff. Nobody knows?
I'm not to say it's just here, but I would have to look into that further.
Okay. And if you could also find out, is, if that's a year-round monthly, a seven hundred and ninety-five a month for twelve months? Because I know they did a lot. Because I know they did a lot of work here around the courthouse this weekend too, in that cleanup crew, so I'm wondering what exactly we're paying for on that. Um, and I know Bob Woolley contacted the rest of the commission, I'm just bringing this up as public information type thing. The pipeline with Phillips 66 and Kinder Morgan, I guess. Did all y'all get a phone call on that? It's going to be coming through this area, it's coming from Borger, Texas, and it's going all the way to Phoenix, Arizona. And the infrastructure will supply refined fuels eventually to California, so it's just informational. And the last thing I have is that, uh, the other day, well, I say the other day, last week, there was a big tour at the city water, uh, sewer plant reclamation wastewater. I had the opportunity to meet with Scott Mitten after that, after that, uh, tour, and, uh, I think they're very interested, a lot of the new people coming in are very interested, as well as the new city manager, working closely with the county. I was, uh, refreshed, I guess, by the conversation we had, and, and what's hopefully going to take place between the city and county, so I think we need to continue looking at all of this as a community instead of county and city, uh, we're all one community, and anyways, just wanted to bring that up, that I was very, very happy with, uh, his attitude towards working with all of us. And some of the new city councilors as well, so.
I just wanted to thank all the candidates that won their elections. Excited to maybe work with some of the city council, and, uh, welcome, Ms. Fergie. I also wanted to talk about, um, let's see when there's classes, uh, for road building. I don't know where, where they'll be at in the state, but I think it'd be beneficial for some of us commissioners to go and kind of see what it takes to build a road and, and patch road and make road last 10, 20, you know, years, just to kind of get some background. I also wanted to talk about that phone call, but, um, Malin already mentioned it, there's going to be that pipeline coming through here. I think that's something important to keep an eye on. And I think that's it. But, a big thing would see when those road, like, uh, Paul was saying, that way we kind of see what it takes. That way, when we get these phone calls, we could kind of explain them, hey, it's, needs a compaction test, or, you know, or it needs, the patch needs to sit for like a week, or, you know, whatever. Kind of so we have some knowledge on it.
Is that it?
Yes.
Okay, um, I would like to thank you for that on the square. I totally support that, I think it'd be great to be able to bring some people to shop local and, get through the holidays with that. I wanted to tell you guys that on the website, Roy Lee's email, Commissioner Chriswell, sorry, his email is incorrect, it says like, what does it say? Roosevelt?
No, it says Roosevelt Bounty.
Oh, Roosevelt Bounty, yeah.
So I just had copied and pasted it in his email.
So...
Thank you for that.
Had that done on purpose.
And I wanted to ask you, is there anything we can do about the pigeon poop outside the door? I don't know if there's any way to fix those ledges up there, to where the pigeons don't sit on there. Spikes. It is disgusting when you walk out that door and there's nothing but pigeon poop everywhere. So I would like to see if there's anything we can do with that. Um, and then, I don't usually comment on any particular business or anything, but I want to give a huge shout out to the Roosevelt General Hospital. Um, I had to have, um, I had a family member that was in there a couple of weeks ago. They did absolute excellent care, they are very tentative, they're, they're awesome with their follow-ups, with everything they, that they did, that, um, my family member was in there for a week and then got transferred to Trust Point. Their care was outstanding, and I just wanted to give a huge shout out to them for that. And I think that is all that I have.
Adam, I have some, I have something else to add, if it's all right. Um, I was shopping at some of these local businesses, and I would like to keep the money local, like when we buy our work boots and stuff. You know, shop maybe at here on the square, or, you know, some of the hardware stores carry steel toe boots, compact toe boots, if we can just keep that money local, coming from the county.
Okay, and I need, Debbie has a little update she would like to give, so I told her I'd just stick her in there, because she told me about it, and it'd be easier if she explained it.
All right, thank you, Chairman Dixon. Um, so I sent all of you guys an email last Thursday, I believe, about, um, the Senate Bill 3 and the behavioral health thing that's going on. Clovis had, is, got the $40,000 to do this first year, where we're just going through, we're doing surveys, we're trying to get input on what behavioral needs are in our area. Um, and I was at that last meeting when we talked about, they wanted, um, the health council to give, was it 6,000?
Yes.
Because Curry County had given 6,000. Come to find out, we don't really need that at this point, because right now, we're just trying to find out the needs in our area. Well, we had a meeting, um, I can't remember when it was, last Wednesday, maybe. Curry County has a lot of input, and I believe from the research I did, in the next three years, four years, there's going to be $26 million that goes toward this. Curry County's going to take it if we don't get our input in. I sent out this email to Alida, I mean, all our rural schools and Purtalla schools. I've talked to Mrs. Rowley, um, about sending out the surveys through the mass school. Her problem is, when they do that, they think it's related to the school, and it kind of causes some issues. But, um, my thing is, we need some government officials. I have to go because I deal with the health councils, and there's some money that comes to the health councils for helping with this. But we really need our elected officials, we need some input from our, and I also sent it to the county, I mean, the city council and all those people. But we just need some people there, they're having a huge meeting on the second, third, and fourth of December.
Yes.
And it's going to be from like 8:30 to 4:30, it's going to, it's with UNM out of Albuquerque. But I just really, I just really want you guys to get some input, because there is going to be a lot of money. And we need to get some of that money for our area, because if we don't, Clovis will keep it all. There's 12 judicial districts, and if they divide up the 26 million, I mean, we're looking at maybe a million a peak, I mean, for each county. Anyway, I just, I really just want involvement with some, some of our county officials. And I know, Roy Lee, we had talked about that you had gone and talked to, or were at a meeting with, um, was it, was Amber was still here? Because I know that's when it all started. Yeah. So, and you've talked to Lance?
Yeah, I have, and I am planning on attending the BHRIA
Okay, great.
Meeting after the, we have the commission meeting on the second, so as soon as that's over, then I will head to Clovis for that. Um, we do still have to pay that 6,000, um, because it's a match. So, that's, um...
You need to check on that.
Okay, as of two days ago, that was my understanding.
From Lance?
From someone at the, at Curry County, yes. So I will, I can double check into it more, but, um, but, yeah, so I am tracking that, and I have tried to get that survey out as well.
Okay. The money is supposed to be for in-kind, which is not necessarily money, it's more work. And so, um, yeah, I've talked with the lady through, um, where is she from, the courts? Esperanza, and she's saying that we do not have to give money, that we just need to be doing input and getting the word out to our community.
Okay, and I'll get with you later, so that we can discuss it a little more.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Okay. Okay.
Fabian, you brought up a point a while ago. Talking about the keep buying the boots for the road department. How long has the county been doing that?
I don't know what you said, I was trying to... I didn't mean to put you off, but I seen in our packet where the county, I guess, bought steel toe boots, right, Fabian? Were those the steel toe for the road department? Uh, you know, since I've been a commissioner, this is the first time it's done.
I don't think it's the first time.
Since I've been a commissioner. I don't know.
No, I think that they've bought them, I think it's just been under, I don't know how they have it listed now, but it's PPE, so it's, it's always been something that they've done.
It's been like six years probably, since they started buying boots.
Yeah.
It's been longer than that.
Yeah, probably.
Since I was upstairs.
I just didn't know, I didn't know that, caught me off guard.
Yeah.
And then, you know, like I said, and then there was, instead of all being the same, they were all different prices. You know, and so I just, I didn't know if they just had one company come in there, they all got the same company, but, you know, each, each boot was bought, that was bought, had a different price.
That's why I did too.
And so I was just, I was, I was just curious about that.
I think the, the rule on that is ocean requirement, if I recall correctly. If we require them to wear it, we also have to provide a two-year. And I don't know if there's been like a limit to a max set on those, but I was wondering the same thing, because some of them were 210, apparently.
Yeah, and one of the lowest, I think the top, the top was like 210, and the bottom was 148.
Yeah.
So I, I was just curious. And, and I think, you know, they, yeah, they got to have them, yeah. And I have not a problem buying them, but I was just curious, and I was just, I was just curious.
Well, and that's why I agree with Fabian too, we're sending all that money into Curry County. We should, we can buy those boots here, you know?
Have a guy, have a representative come in here somewhere, spend that money here.
It used to be, we used to go to, uh, Skinner's, and that's who we had the deal with, and the limit was 150. And if we wanted more expensive boots, we put that money out of our own pocket.
And why did we quit that, do you know?
I have no idea, I just, I know, I know we have plenty of stores here, and it needs to be kept local, I mean, it only makes sense, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Good at that, okay. Try a different pin, okay. Thank you, anybody else? Okay. Moving on to new business, request for the approval of an easement between Yucca Telecom and Roosevelt County Board of Commission Fairgrounds.
Skip old business.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
They skipped what?
Old business. Are you looking at it?
I am on six. It says new business on mine.
You needed an amended agenda.
Yeah.
Sorry, this is one that came out of the wrong.
Okay, well, let me hang on, because apparently I've got the old agenda.
Mine also says new business.
The only thing that was amended was, um, to add the old business, um, and that was...
Let me go back.
And then that one had, the only difference was to add, um, discussion and selection of the committee for the San Juan Mesa Wind Project.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I pulled, I pulled it up, it says...
There we go, now we go, here we go.
That's the only difference on that.
Now I'm on there, I changed on my thing, sorry, guys, old business. Discussion and selection of committee for San Juan Mesa Wind Project. So, um, Josh has called me, Josh Fremo has called, Fremo, I don't know how to say his name. He's called me again, we do need to, to make a, um, committee to discuss that stuff with them. And then, we can do, make our meeting with them, maybe sometime in January, the first part of January or something, if it's okay with y'all, because he said we need to do a couple of, um, get together a couple of times and go over, you know, just the different stuff between now and then, so, um, we just need to set up a committee, like, to do, like, because we're going to do the... Yeah, and so like, any of the things that we want in their road, so you just have a committee, and so... So I would think, I think what we talked about was like, it will be Peter Kelton, it'll be the county manager. It would be a couple of commissioners, and if we want someone from the assessor's office. So, um...
It can be George or Stefan, which one, but one of y'all needs to be there.
Okay, so, I would like, I agree with you on Fabian, I like, because he's already been on the, the wind project. Um, you know, he knows all that wind turbine mumbo, and which one of y'all would like to be on there?
I nominate George.
I don't, I haven't got like a particular date, an email will go out, we'll send an email out later, and send it to Josh that has who the committee members are. Okay, and, um, and then, um, it'll be, um, well, Jim Meadow. And, um, I would like to be on there, if y'all don't care, it's in my district.
I think you should be.
But if you don't, I don't have to. If somebody else wants it instead, that's fine with me too. Okay, so, um, be George, Fabian, Meadow, and Tina. Does anybody else want to be on that committee? Does anybody think of anybody else that we should have on that?
Peter Kelton.
Well, yeah, Peter, of course he'll be on there.
You got Meadow down?
Yep. Yes, okay. So, we've got George, Fabian, Meadow, Tina, and Peter Kelton. So I will make that as a motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Are you through now? Okay, so, everything else on my paper agenda is correct, right?
Yes.
This will just be 7A. Request for... Request for the approval of a... We've done voted, and it's over. So, request for approval of an easement agreement between Yucca Telecom and the Roosevelt County Board of Commission, and the Roosevelt County Fairgrounds, Mr. Montiel.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. This is, uh, an agreement, uh, easement agreement to allow, uh, Yucca Telecom to provide fiber optics across the fairgrounds onto Hampton Farms property. It's your basic easement agreement, just, uh, allow them to put fiber optics through the ground and going across. I stand up for you, any questions?
Where, what's the...
Oh, I'm sorry, um, by the, by the entrance gate, the iron gates, by the trash cans. There's a little, um, what did you drew a blank? Box there, and then from there, it's going to go diagonally, northeast diagonally, along that wrought iron fence, up to the windmill park, and along that fence line, crossing over into the Hampton Farms.
Going across the street?
No, across into Hampton Farms, um...
Dry.
Dry and shed.
Dry and shed back there, where the scale house is, just east of the fairgrounds.
I have the...
Yeah, it should be in...
Fiber optics, internet, or something.
Oh, yeah, I did see that.
And I saw that, but I didn't really understand where that was. Right. The buildings and the fences, that kind of thing.
We do need better fiber, we do need that.
Yes, so, everything that's, if they get dug, if, if the asphalt gets dug up, or anything like that, everything's going to be brought to, back to the normal, so, it's going to be, um, uh, an easement granted for installation, operation, maintenance, and repair, and replacement, and upgrade, and removal of fiber optics within the designed area, Exhibit A. The access right, be full rights of ingress and egress across the property for the purpose related for to the facilities. Advanced notices will be provided, except in emergency, if something was going in there and needed to fix it. Uh, construction and restoration, grantee must construct and maintain facilities in a good and worked-like manner, and restore property surfaces to their prior conditional, uh, condition. The duration will be, the easement is, uh, unless abandoned or terminated in writing by the grantee, and it does not run... and it does not run with the land and cannot be sold or transferred without county approval. The removal of equipment, uh, fiber optic facility or improvement, if directed by Roosevelt County, if you tell, you guys tell them y'all need to remove it and we'll get it removed by them. There's a hold harmless clause. Grantee agrees to hold Roosevelt County ho- harmless for any damages caused by the improvements. And termination of the conditions, the easement terminates if the improvements are removed, destroyed or no longer used, or if the grantee sells or transferred its legal interest in the property. So again, it goes from the double iron gates where that little, uh, uh, box is at, uh, and it'll go from that box, it'll go northeast across or diagonal across that wrought iron fence up to the fence of the windmill park. From there then it'll go east along the fence line of the windmill park, crossing into the drying, uh, property for Hampton Farms.
Did you want to ask here?
Well, what I was trying to say a while ago, and I think you was understanding. If, uh, we needed that in the big barn for any of these events that were the barrel races, the rodeos or whatever, that we needed something.
This is the time to put it in.
Yes. It's the time to put it in.
So the opportunity to be there to, to also do that because it's going, it is going to be dug in there and it's going to be available. So.
Brandon told me we had internet.
I don't know.
I don't think we have fiber optics.
It's just not fiber.
It's not fiber.
This is a fiber line.
At the extension office, we do have fiber. But not at the.
Barns.
It's just not out there at the barn.
They're just the routers, I guess.
Yeah.
But if we had it at the barns and those gates, because like when they run their little machines to make sure that they can run their like debit card machines and whatever. I know there was some issue at the fair, was it, about where there was internet?
Well, they were talking about it for the concert that got canceled.
That's what it was, the concert.
They wanted to be able to scan everybody in and out, and so they needed internet services for that.
Yeah, that's what it was.
I don't know what we have to do to get that initiated, but if they're going to be digging out there anyway, they might as well make this.
And I, I can follow up on that, but right now, um.
They could just furnish it.
Again, we're just trying to get that easement agreement for Yucca Telecom to, to bury that cable there to go to the Hampton Farms. And then once we get that, then I can follow up with the Yucca people to go ahead and run that line also to the event center or to the fairgrounds.
I think we should table it until we talk to them first about getting fiber optics to our buildings.
The only.
If we vote on it now.
I know, and we have what is today, the middle of November, we have the first of December. So what, two weeks off, is that going to put a cramp on them to wait?
With all due respect, Commissioner, uh, we need to get that fiber optic in the ground so we can get services to Hampton Farms. And then if they need to dig across them, we can get that dug across by, uh, getting into that fiber optic from there.
Is there not a representative from Hampton's Farms here? What are you, what, can you wait two weeks until we do that?
We've already waited six months.
How come?
Uh, most of it's been Yucca.
Yeah.
We had asked them to come from a different direction. They've chosen to come from this direction. My understanding is this because it's a shorter distance and where the other direction and less, less buried things in the grounds to cross over and destroy, whether it be water lines, gas lines, like whatever.
Sure.
And that's why they've chosen this direction. Uh, what we have done, uh, at our scale house is we've put in a, a new set of scales that we are able then to, from that scale, we can, without internet, but with the internet in, in there, we can, all of our scales and all our buying points and all, all the data can be gathered in one place instead of driving all over God's creation to get that data or having it emailed and it not being corrected or whatever. And that, why, why Yucca chose this is because there's less things for them to dig up and destroy.
Yes. It's the shortest route.
We've been on this for six months. I mean, our harvest season's almost over and we, we have no way to collect all the data at this point. So I would appreciate if, if we move forward.
My biggest concern is, I don't know how many years ago, but it's, I'll say five, six years ago, the county granted Yucca at, uh, an easement. In there, in the county's easement, road easements. And they did not put the land back to where it was before. And I fought, and I fought as a landowner because they had to bring in a D eight, they brought in a D eight cap, big rock saw down there. They brought up huge rocks, just tore that country plum up. And I fought and fought with Yucca to try to get them to reclamation on that land, putting it back to plant and, you know, reseed.
Yes, sir.
Because the weeds that came up after that was horrendous and nothing, just because it was not in the easement contract. They did not have to do anything like that because it was not in there. And so they've got to be, like I say, they're digging across this asphalt. They're going to have, they need to, there, there needs to be some.
Yes, sir. In this contract, it, it is written in there that they will resurface the con, the, uh, the pavement the way it is or bring it up nice or better.
Michael, did you read the contract? What do you think about it?
It's our standard.
I read it and I don't see problems with it.
It's our standard contract that we do, the, the new standard contract that we do. Now what they, what kind of contract they had or agreement they had back in the day, I don't, I don't know, but this is.
I guess maybe Tina and Paul was on the commission. I know I didn't have a foot to stand on.
We'll make sure that it's.
I mean, it, it was awful what they did down there.
And we'll make sure that it's square in the way it's supposed to be through inspections and everything that needs to be taken care of.
And I think their equipment, tearing up the pavement, the asphalt out there, you know, you know, out there at parking lots and stuff going across there, you know.
Well, well, I said, well.
Sure need to take care of it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make sure that, that it gets, it gets squared up the way it needs to be. Yes, sir.
What does it say about like the water lines? Because, um, I'm not sure what utility it was. I, um, I don't want to say what utility it was actually, but, um.
Anything that they hit, they're responsible to fix.
Okay, so with that being said, there was one hit. It was fixed. They claim it was fixed. The dad gum thing has leaked and these people's water bill has like quadrupled because the patch that they put on there just continues to leak, but now it's past the time. So now these people just eat the water bill and have this water line that was just fractured because of putting the stuff in the ground. So I want to make sure that whatever they do break, it is fixed. It's fixed properly because I don't want to have any of that.
Understood. And also they will have to do an 811 call, make sure where all the lines and everything are out there and try to locate them. And, and of course, if, if some, it's just the nature of the beast, things get hit, but we'll make sure that everything's correct.
And it says in there that they have to fix it properly. Okay.
Wes, did they tell you what the, how soon they'd start after it was approved?
As soon as we get approval, they'll start.
So they're ready to go now.
It is, it is, again, and I think Johnny would agree, we have internet on that area that we need internet at, but it's significantly further away than coming from that easement necessary.
Yeah, we're just going from here to get across the county fairgrounds to get onto Hampton's, uh, property and then from there they can run the line to their property, but they just need to get the fiber from that box onto their property.
If we go, if we go the other way, we're looking at three or 400 yards more of digging than on our property side, there are gas lines, electrical lines, water lines, a lot more line. That, that's why they went the other way is because there were so many more things they would encounter of, to destroy. Uh, and to your, to your point, Roy Lee, excuse me, maybe speaking out of turn, but you're exactly right. I mean, the road that my mother lives on, they tore that road all the, and it took months. And then eventually you guys, the county, redid that road just a year or so ago to, to fix the damage. So I know where you're coming from on that. In the contract that I saw, they're responsible to put it back to the specs that it is before they dug it.
And that's, yeah, then that, that'll be the responsibility. We'll make sure that everything is brought back the way it's supposed to be.
Michael, so would we be able to, like Paul suggested about running the fiber to the, even to the big arena at, while they're out there? Would we have to, could we not just decide that now since this is on the agenda? Could we not add that and just make a decision to run that? To, to be able to talk to them about running it while they're there?
Yeah, yeah.
Let this happen.
Yes.
But. I hate messing up things.
That's what I'm saying. Could we not approve this separate, but also at the same time give the manager the ability to talk to him and if they can run it? Yeah. Just get it done out there at the same time?
In this agreement, we also, the county also has rights to that easement also.
Okay.
Um, Madam Chair, looking at the contract and what's on the agenda, um.
Just approve the contract, switch it.
I think that, I mean, I think that all you can do, all you probably should do just to be safe regarding the agenda item is just approve the agenda item. Um, but I don't think there's a problem with, you know, giving the county manager direction to work out something else. And, and even.
That's what I wanted to do. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
That emotion is second, Commissioner Grider?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, items, I think that's really seven B. Um, so discussion and approval of Eastern Plains Council of Governments appointment. So, um, it is me and I'm on that board right now. I'm the rep on that board for us. However, our new county manager, she was already on that board with the city of Melrose and she was elected as the chair of that board. I would like to request that I transfer my position as the board man, board representative to Ms. Forger and then I'll just be the alternate if that would be okay with the commission.
If that takes action, we need to, I'll make that happen. I'll make that motion.
Okay, now second. Commissioner Grider?
Yes, yes.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, seven C. I did. Um, discussion of legislative priorities for 2026 legislative session. Commissioner Chriswell.
I was just thinking, uh.
People online can hear you.
I was just thinking that it's legisla- you know, January is going to be here before we know it. Uh, we haven't talked about maybe our, our wants and needs from our legislatures as a county. And so I was just kind of wanting to throw it out there that we need to start thinking about this and for the December meetings where we can come up with our wants and needs.
You know, started putting those priorities in, in line, what, two months ago or something, I thought.
We did.
And, well, and then we kind of, when our budget deal kind of got out of whack, everything kind of went to the side.
I'm wondering if they're even going to look at our priorities.
And, you know, and I don't know if they even will or not, but I just thought times, you know, January is creeping up and it's going to get here before we know it and we're all going to be busy with Christmas and holiday, Thanksgiving, Christmas and, and so, and, uh, I asked Juan, I, I did make a phone call to Juan and asked him kind of what his wants are and he is still in for us, one of those, uh, steel rollers. Steel roller and, uh, that pad foot or whatever, you know, that.
Yeah.
Pad foot packer.
That, those two items is what we skipped over.
Right.
Actually, it's been two years. It will be two years since we got the, uh, chip spreader.
Chip spreader.
And those other two items was on that list, but, uh, they failed to get funded and they need those two items to go along with what they have.
Yes.
Because these others are like 1940 and 1950 model.
Yeah.
Pieces, and I'm serious, they're old.
Old piece of equipment.
So they're nearly called antiques.
And they're constantly working on that. I know they're constantly working on that pad foot.
Yeah.
That foot paddle or whatever, uh.
So the one that we're looking at getting is a self-contained, basically. It's got a cabon and actually an air conditioner and a heater where they can utilize these all times during the year. And we, we want the best from our road crew, uh, crew, we need to give them the best, so. That's why I've been pushing for the last couple of years to get these two items.
But I know he's still wanting, he's still wanting those two items.
Yeah, good.
But I just thought, I thought we need to bring it back up, kind of talk about it and get some ideas or what, you know, from everybody on what we need to do.
Well, Paul said earlier, we need to have a road workshop. Why don't we do the both of them together?
Well, that has to happen before legislative starts. And I don't really know what date that is.
The sixth, January 19th.
Sixteenth.
January, January.
Nineteenth.
And we have to have our, what?
Kind of have to have them.
We need to have that done by December, so we have to have our, our.
What do you call it?
Our legislative priorities, our ICIP.
ICIP.
We have to have our ICIP then before then. Look at Carla, get up there.
Hi, good morning. Um, we did do our ICIP back in June. The state has gone to a new platform now. We have pars and caps. Um, those two items, the smooth foot and the, the other. Yes, they are on our ICIP. I believe they were either ranked number two or number three for 2027. Um, I did sit in on a training last week about doing our legislative forms. The deadline is December 12th to submit for funding off of our ICIP projects. So I'll definitely put in for those, but yeah, those, they have to be submitted by the 12th.
What was our number one? Do you remember?
Um, I believe it was, don't quote me, but I think it was something with, um, roads court. The courthouse was on there, but I know we did get 600,000.
Usually roads is usually our first one.
Mm-hmm, yeah. And I want to say those two were two and three or they're three and four.
Okay.
So you said, uh, the steel roller and the other packer was for 2027?
2027 and it's either number two, number three or three or four.
How, can we move them to 2026?
No. Yeah, because our ICIP right now is running 2027 to 2031. So it would be the next, because we just got capital A for 2026 of the five, 25, which is on the agenda later for the road improvements and then for the courthouse that we approved a couple of months ago, or a couple of weeks ago, sorry.
So we are, we will be working for the 26, 27.
Yes, fiscal year, but yeah, 27. You're welcome.
Okay.
So anyway, I kind of thought it was time to go to talk about it and make a decision.
Okay, so we already have it. Is that set on there? So we can just go ahead and just go with our ICIP like it is?
And Carla and I, um, are going to meet about that to make sure we get it all correct. And then also I think that we need to look at, um, the New Mexico county's legislative priorities.
We already submitted those in.
Yeah, and then the, the base, um, will have some legislative priorities as well that I know that in the past, um, as the mayor in Melrose, they asked us to, um, talk about those as well when we're up there. So, um, once I get those from them, I'll share those with you as well.
And I would, as another priority, and I'm, and, and we need to talk to the base about this, is that we lose a lot of.
Grocery seed.
Grocery seeds tax to Curry County.
Sn- city Clovis.
And the city of Clovis.
Not Curry County.
Okay, not Curry County, but the city of Clovis. We lose it to the city of Clovis. Uh, I think we need to make a top priority to see if we can't talk to some guys and see if we can get some of this changed to Roosevelt County.
And that's something that Lance and I have talked about, um, looking into to see what we can do.
I've been told the reason that, and I think I've. I've been told the reason that, and I think I've told you all before, the reason it happens like that, the contracts are signed in Clovis or in Curry County, even though the work's going to be done in Roosevelt County. So somehow we need to get all that shifted.
Mm-hmm.
Come to the courthouse done. That way Roosevelt County receives the GRT.
Even if they sign them out there at the bombing range, because the bombing range is in Roosevelt County. Right, whatever happens. Yeah, I agree.
But, but like I said, we need to get those priorities.
Okay.
Anyway.
Okay. Moving on, contracts, agreements and procurements. Eight A, request for approval of New Mexico Capital Outlay Grant Agreement, Department of Transportation Capital Appropriations Project. Mr. Carla.
Good morning again.
Mr. Carla, because Mr. Dominguez is not.
In your packet is a copy of that grant agreement for capital outlay for funding for the roads. And we were awarded 525. They won and everybody, they estimate the project will be 652, so we'll have to meet the difference as part of our match. And I just request approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Motion and a second, Commissioner Munoz?
Yes.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion and consideration of 526 Local Driving While Intoxicated Grant Agreement. Amendment number one, grant number 26 DG 23, Ms. Reed.
Yes, good morning again. This was a special application that I applied for back in September. We were awarded it in October. We, last year, end of FY25, we sent back about 12,000, well, we just didn't use 12,000 of our awarded grant money. And that was money from, that was in the budget for treatment and for our compliance people. We got those agreements signed so late. One of them was in February, one was in April. Those, it was one with mental health resources and one with be well treatment. And we just didn't have enough time to spend the money and frustrating, so. Anyway, we did things different this year. It's already in our budget and, and that all is, is going to be a full year to get those money spent. What I did with Javier, with the sheriff's department, they had requested about 10,000, a little over 10,000 to pay for overtime for special activities like checkpoints, the directed patrols, and then special things like having a couple of officers out during graduation for NMU, for Portalis graduation and proms. So, and I think for them, because he spoke in his report earlier, they just ended one cycle. So they can't start money again like until next spring. And if we have this agreement in place, and I'll have to get a, enter department agreement to them and then eventually we'll bring it to you guys in December, but we'll have money from December to May to help them with overtime. And then hopefully their next cycle of money will start in June or July. So we don't have that dead time for them to not be doing some special activities. And that's what 10,000 of the money was. 2,800 is for some of our giveaway items. State Department, DWI State Department really denied almost every county last year at the end of the year. When we requested to, to use some of our money for giveaways, they're real picky about that. We can't spend, like I can only spend 10% of our total funds awarded. And I had that in place. I had approval. Once we spent some money, they denied what we bought. They just got a lot pickier. And from what I understood from all counties, they did all of us, I mean, we lost about $700. The coordinator from Curry County said he lost over 4,000. So I asked for 2,800 to kind of recoup that because about total money between distribution and grant money, we lost about 13,000 and that's what this is. So I'm just trying to get it back, trying to get it spent again this year. And I've already got approval to do what we did last year. So we'll see if they approve my quarter, our quarterly report when we spend it. That's a quick, brief thing.
Second.
Got a motion to second, Commissioner Munoz?
Yes, yes.
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 Motion carries.
Thank you. I had one last thing just because it happened this week and it, I don't, I don't want to toot my horn, but I did finish the New Mexico Ed certification for the DWI coordinators.
Congratulations.
Got that completed certificate on Monday, so.
Congratulations. Thank you.
I'm certified now.
Good job. Okay, resolutions, ordinances and proclamations. Nine A, consideration of resolution 2025-36 participation in capital outlay program administered by New Mexico Department of Transportation. Ms. Weems.
Good morning. This item was also in your packet. This is the resolution that goes along with that capital outlay award for FY26 and they just require a resolution with DOT.
With that, I'll move to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to second, Commissioner Greider?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. Item nine B, consideration of resolution 2025-37, supporting Lincoln County's opposition of the Barber Springs Pump Storage Project. Commissioner Dixon, that is in your packet. I'm sure you guys have all read it. Basically, without just going into every bit of detail, it's pretty much like the NITC project. Well, it is part of the NITC thing anyway. They didn't even come to them. They didn't discuss anything with them. They actually found out from another county that it was going to go on, that it was going to happen. And so Lincoln County is just opposing it. And so we were just, I just wanted to send out a letter of support. I know multiple counties have supported them in this because we've all got to stand up against this government overreach and the things with this. So with that.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion to second, Commissioner Greider?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Any media communication? Okay, item 10, executive session. So we're going to go into executive session pursuant. Does anybody need to take a break before we go in there?
Yes.
We will recess to go to the restroom and then we'll come back and go into executive session.
We need a vote.
Oh, we need a vote to recess. Commissioner Greider?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. We are recessed.